You can't double dip that way.
It's just like a political double dip on one earmark.
Ready? What's that?
Ready?
Okay, absolutely.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Shhh. At this time, if everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? If there is, come up to the table here. Okay, can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
For the record, the agenda was posted on May 31st between the hours of 4:30 and 5:30 at the locations listed on the agenda according to statutes.
Thank you, Pam. This is going to be a revised agenda with the revision being the typo of old business. There's just old business A through D. There's no E. So at this time, can I get an approval of the agenda as revised?
I move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Six, consideration of possible action, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on May 2nd, 2024, May 15th, 2024, and May 22nd, 2024, Budget and Tax Rate Hearing. Can I get a motion for those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd, May 15th, and May 22nd, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our first appointment, Appointment 7A, Consideration of Possible Action, Presentation of Awards to the Exhibitors from the 2024 Churchill County Junior Livestock Show. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll give you guys the opportunity to go ahead and head back to the back part of the room where you can present those awards. And I've got a few comments to start us off. First off, it's exciting to have some good-looking young folks here to participate in this awards presentations with us. Again, as a reminder, this was the second year that Churchill County itself has managed the Churchill Junior Livestock Show, which is over eighty years of history within the community. This year, total sales in livestock was over $170,000. Of the $170,000, if you take out the value of those projects, the market value of those projects, the total scholarship awarded by this community for its agriculture use was $139,604.60. So a big round of applause for our community. These young folks put that money away, and that helps them continue their education, hopefully, in agriculture, but any of the items or dreams that they have in terms of their future. The lambs averaged $9.35. The steers averaged $5.70. The hogs averaged $6.67. The goats averaged $11.50. Chicken, pen of chickens was 200, turkeys was 300, and rabbits was 300. But to give the public kind of an idea of how that reflects, if the average for hogs was $6.67, when you take them down to the livestock auction, they actually sell for 82 cents per pound. So that's the additional above that the community's paying that creates the scholarship capacity in this. The example would be the steers are around $2 a pound, but yet they sold in our cell for $5.70, just to give you a frame of reference of how that works. So we're very, very pleased and appreciative to all our businesses and community members that step forward and support these programs. With that said, we'll start the awards. We have some awards that are given during the stock show itself, and then we have some awards that include interviews or things that happen after the stock show, which is why the students arrive here to get those awards presented directly from the commission. So we'll start with our grand champion steer carcass. So after the animals are purchased and then are sent to harvest, that carcass is evaluated, and they pick out the best carcass of the steers that participated. And that sponsorship is from Winder Land and Cattle, and Hannah Montavlo is your winner. Bear with us, we're going to get a few pictures. Your grand champion hog carcass, sponsored by Sage Hill Dairy, Claire Barbie. Your grand champion lamb carcass, sponsored by Lacazacas, Ava Bunyer. And your grand champion goat carcass, sponsored by Great Basin Title, Candace Weismer. She was unable to attend, but we congratulate her just the same. In the all-around winners competition, this group goes through, fills out applications, they look at how they do in the stock show itself, and then go through interviews. So our reserve grand champion junior all-around, sponsored by Churchill County, is Eli Paschodo. Our reserve grand champion intermediate all-around, sponsored by the City of Fallon, Bailey Paschodo. Reserve grand champion senior all-around, sponsored by Fallon Livestock, again unable to attend, but we appreciate and acknowledge her victory, Candace Weismer. Next to our grand champion all-around winners, grand champion junior all-around, sponsored by Wendy Bullock for School Board, Makati Bogdanovich. Grand champion intermediate all-around, sponsored by Cheek Construction, Autumn Thomas. And then grand champion senior all-around, sponsored by Brenda Ingram for Justice of the Peace, Alefae. So all of you that received buckles today, go ahead and move up there, and we'll get one large group picture. That means no you, Jack, no you, James. Everybody else. Big round of applause. Move your thighs, I think you see everybody. Where's that? Because? Get in the morning picture. Because I want one. That was awesome. Congratulations, everyone. Big round of applause.
Moving on to Appointment 7B, Consideration of Possible Action, Application for Division of Land into Large Parcels Followed by Colby Frey to Divide the Property Located at 8705 Schur's Highway, Subject Parcel Number 006092-13, Consisting of 142.04 Acres in the A-10 Zoning District, Whereby the applicant proposes to create two large farming parcels. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning, for the record. Before you have, you have a map filed on behalf of, by Colby Frey, on behalf of the Louises, who own the property. Mr. Frey intends to purchase one of the new lots, being the east lot, the, and that will be incorporated into the Frey Ranch. The west lot includes farmstead and additional farmland that will remain with the Louises. No new developments is proposed on either of the resulting lots. And Mr. Frey intends to place his lot into a conservation easement, so he'll be back before you for that. It's a fairly normal two-lot split, although it is complicated by a couple issues. The first is that Mr. Frey is requesting a waiver from the requirement to dedicate water for the east property, which he'll own after the split, when he puts it in the conservation easement. Normally, the water fee has to be paid before the map records. Mr. Frey will own, has requested that the water dedication requirement for his lot be waived since he'll be applying for the Navy Conservation Easement Program. So Deputy DA Sanford, myself, and Mr. Frey will need to work out an alternative to the normal water deed that land dividers do for their maps. The second is that the applicant is proposing a very long flag lot for the east property, with the flagpole portion being approximately 2,250 feet reaching to the Schur's Highway, and you can barely see it on the screen showing the map for the project. It's a, it's a long strip of land on the north side of parcel three. Flagpole lots can have negative consequences for adjacent properties and for future development of transportation network, and a very long flagpole will greatly increase those consequences. Staff would normally recommend denial of a lot with a flagpole this long, but the specific circumstances of Mr. Frey's proposal deal with the problems that would be created. These are described in detail in the staff report. The planning commission agreed and recommended approval of the project. I'm witness to that. The surveyor is here if you need to answer, ask any questions that he needs to answer.
Is there any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment?
Is he going to grow marijuana on any of these process?
Probably. Just kidding.
Well, he, he came before our commission years ago asking for that.
And you disproved him.
Any other questions? Not to get a motion.
People who want to buy land.
You need to come up, public comment?
You'll have to come up here and speak. Right here to this seat. And then you state your name for the record.
My name is Sally Ray. I live on Pottery Drive. I have a situation where I have 35 acres next to me, and there's a piece that looks like what this, what you got up here. And due to, due to that, when people, there's no road. He can't put any houses or anything on to it because they've put houses behind it. There's a dyke in front of it. I'm alongside him. On the other side, there's houses alongside him. He's boxed in. So he bought the property with the idea of putting a school and houses and everything else in there, but the way it's cut up, he can't do it. Years ago, we bought the house in 97, I think it's 2000, 2001. The county came to me and said, sent me a letter, says, hey, we want to put an easement. We want to put a road right where your property is. We want you to donate this land to us. I've got two acres. And they wanted to donate, so he put a road alongside me. I wrote alongside me. First of all, and second of all, I've got two garages. One sits on, right next to that property. I got two sheds and a well shed and a well that's sitting next to that property. So I said, no. But if you do that with this piece of land, they got the same problem. So I think you need to address that before you go any further with it.
I think it has been addressed. This can be put into a conservation easement, and furthermore, he owns all the properties around it as well.
Okay.
And so once it goes into a conservation easement, no development will ever be able to happen with the Navy base.
Legally.
Okay. And is he paying for that, or is he just being, is it being donated?
Paying for what?
The property. He has or he has it, right?
This is owned by someone else. He's splitting into two, buying one, the lot from the one people, and the other people that own the lot that goes against the highway, they'll maintain ownership of that if they decide to develop it or whatever happens.
They have road access nearing to it, right? In case in the future with.
Right off Schur's Highway. He's just, he's keeping the flagpole, so he has access to his lot in the back that will be under a conservation easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move, A, to approve the division of land into large parcel maps, application for Colby Frey to divide APN 006-092-13 into two parcels, subject to conditions as listed in the staff report. B, to accept the offer to grant easements for public purposes identified on the map. And C, to reject all offers to dedicate lands in accordance at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Appointment 7C, Consideration of Possible Action, Ratification of Agreement Between Churchill County Public Health and Clinesis Incorporated in the amount of $4,246 for EpiTrak Software and Services. Shannon?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Shannon Arts, Churchill County Social Services. As part of moving the public health lab from UNR over to the county lab, we needed to create an interface with the state EpiTrak's infectious disease reporting system. This is how we report those results. So this is just the contract to build that mechanism to make that mandated reporting. It's through our colleague system. Any questions I can answer?
Is there any questions or comments from board or staff? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and ratify the agreement as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. 7E, Consideration of Possible Action, Adoption of Resolution 10-2024, A Resolution Designating the Churchill County Library Director to be a position for which there is a critical labor shortage and a critical needs position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford, for the record.
Oh, it's incredible deep.
That's not the same.
Ignore that, Joe. Going back 7D, Consideration of Possible Action, Approval of a Comment Letter to the Bureau of Land Management, Draft Resource Management Plan Amendment, and the Environmental Impact Statement for Greater Sage Droughts. Jeremy?
I would have gladly yielded my time. Now I'm the filibuster.
For the record, Jeremy Drew, Principal Resource Specialist with Resource Concepts Incorporated. And today, after the presentation's proud alumni of both the 4H and FFA programs, I'm glad the kids left because I don't want them thinking, oh, you're successful, and then your reward is dealing with sage grouse for your whole life. So this works out well. In your packet, board members, you have both the BLM and State of Nevada Public Presentations for Background. I'm not going to go through those unless there's specific questions. What I wanted to focus on today was kind of the main parts of our comment letter, which serves as a framework for some additional document-specific comments. Also realize that we have been a cooperating agency in this process, so there's been a lot of work that's been done under kind of embargoed NDA that you haven't necessarily seen that's kind of being manifest into this letter. So please, if there's questions, ask. Before I get into the letter, just a little bit of history to frame this up. At present, we are operating under a 2015 Resource Management Plan Amendment for sage grouse that was approved by the BLM and as well as the state adopted habitat maps. So most of the sage grouse habitat in the county is on Eastern Third. So that's kind of what we're talking about. We're still discovering, even as of yesterday, unintended consequences from that 2015 effort. So my punchline to the BLM has always been, take the time to get it right. And I'm not sure that's resonating just yet, but we'll continue to beat the drum. There was an effort in 2019 for the BLM to come in better alignment with the state plan. I think they did a very good job of that. Unfortunately, that got held up by a legal ruling, and so that plan was never actually adopted. The current BLM proposal is intended to resolve those legal issues as well as quote-unquote, improve their plan, and I think some of that's in the eye of the beholder. But both the 2015 and 2019 plans are actually alternatives under this plan. So if we step into the letter, page one is just kind of a standard introduction and potential of impacts to that Eastern Third of the county. We cite our master plan, and I'll give kudos to Chapter 12, where we talk about wildlife resources being the responsibility to the state because that has provided me the ability to say that the resource management plan really needs to be consistent with the State of Nevada plan. And if things go completely sideways, there will be a governor's consistency review on this, and that's probably our best means of trying to make sure this thing doesn't get completely out of hand. On page two, we talk through the planning area and the complexity of this. So one of the issues with the 2019 plan is that the court said there was not consistency across the range of sage grouse. And so what they've done is put every state with sage grouse under one plan. That has resulted in 2,500 pages of document, including 19 appendices. And for someone who's been through this now three times, it is a complete train wreck. And me saying that on public record is not the first time the BLM has heard this. They probably heard it at the second meeting that we had as cooperating agencies. So not only am I struggling, I guarantee the general public is struggling. And really, it brings us to our biggest recommendation, and that is to have the BLM issue a supplemental draft EIS and basically take another crack at this with a little bit more focused effort on Nevada and not every single state. They've already done their state, you know, their range-wide analysis. They could boil this thing down and have a supplemental draft EIS specific to the State of Nevada, so we can take the time to make the adjustments and get it right for our state. They have, one of the big issues and concerns that I have is alternatives one and two, the 2015 plan and the 2019 plan, include mapping that was adopted by the state. And because of state authority over sage grouse, I think that's really, really important. The other alternatives, three through six, actually rely on an incomplete USGS model. And I may have the versions wrong, but what they published was like version 11. And what the State of Nevada adopted just last week is like version 15. And so the public hasn't had the benefit of seeing the actual final and adopted state maps. We went through this in 2015, and what happened is the BLM and the State of Nevada used different maps for literally six years, which was not the best way to run a railroad. And so we have advocated in alternatives three through six, the need, again, to issue a supplemental draft EIS, so the public and the cooperators are actually looking at the final adopted maps. I didn't put copies of the maps in here. I'll follow up with that in my next update. But there is a significant difference between what the BLM published and what the State of Nevada adopted last week in Churchill County. For example, three through six on the BLM maps includes portions of Sand Mountain, all the way into Salt Wells, and most of Dixie Valley. We actually went out and photo-documented areas that were not sage grouse habitat that resulted in changes in the map. The problem is, those changes didn't get incorporated in the draft EIS. So that's why we've been pretty big about the need for BLM to slow this down and get the right maps into the process. They have six different alternatives, which I believe we talked about on the top of page three. We write a little bit on each. So alternative one is the 2015 plan. Alternative two is 2019. Alternative three, they call the preservation alternative, which is essentially eliminating any sort of public or multiple use in sage grouse habitat, which obviously is completely afoul of the county's master plan as well as the State of Nevada Sage Grouse Conservation Plan. And then alternatives four through six are kind of all various renditions of each other. Two of those, alternative three and alternative six, propose designations of ACECs or areas of critical environmental concern. The good news on that is there are none of those designated in Churchill County, so that's a plus. Quite frankly, all of our really good sage grouse habitat has already been designated as wilderness area, and so we can make a pretty good argument if that were ever proposed. What we're suggesting the BLM do is when they issue a draft supplemental EIS, is they advance alternatives one, two, and five. And that's where I think we could really have a focus and adapt a plan that works best for not only the county but the State of Nevada. And we're asking them to drop alternatives three, four, and six, so the two with the ACECs and those bigger restrictions. The next page talks about special designations. Again, we don't have any proposed ACECs or sage brush focal areas, but just kind of in a show of unanimity with the other counties that do, we're suggesting that they simply don't need those special designations. The second part shows a lot in one table. So this is an allocation, or basically how the BLM would make decisions in sage grouse habitat for the different land uses. This is something we worked with Humble, Eureka, Lander, White Pine, and there's probably a county I'm missing to develop. And what we have really advocated for here, and it's in some of the footnotes, is that these are all preliminary allocation decisions, right? Because the mapping the State of Nevada has is modeled, we know it's wrong. The famous saying is all models are wrong and some are useful, and that is certainly the case here. And so under alternative one, we say all subject, all allocations decisions are subject to field modification and modification of the modeling. And then we talk about the potential for waivers and using the state's conservation credit system to allow some of these uses, even if they're in priority habitat in some cases. The biggest difference we have in this table to what BLM is proposing in their preferred alternative is that we're suggesting that renewable energy does not belong in priority or general sage grouse habitat, and that the Nevada counties are not supportive of ACECs. I don't think that's an issue for Churchill County, given where the priority and general habitat resides. It's not in areas where you would typically want to be developing renewable energy. But I did want to flag for you, that is probably the biggest difference between what the BLM is proposing and what we're suggesting should be in their proposed alternative. I know that's a lot, so I might pause here in case there's any questions on what we're proposing in regards to allocations.
Is there any questions? Go ahead.
So is the problems coming from Washington DC?
Commissioner, that's a great question. So I think my perception is, is that when they went to a range-wide approach, it looped in, I think, 10 different states. They're proposing to amend 76 different resource management plans. And when you do that, two things happen. One, you end up with a project manager who's either regional or out of the DC office that doesn't necessarily understand the State of Nevada. And two, you're trying to develop a plan across a range of area. We represent White Pine County on this too, and Churchill County and White Pine County are day and night different. And when you start looping in Utah, Idaho, Eastern Oregon, Wyoming, the threats are different, the land uses are different. And so one of the recommendations we made early on about developing a Nevada-specific plan is not only will it allow us to focus on getting Nevada right, but it would also, we also advocate for making sure that our state director signs the plan and not the Washington office. So yes, to answer your question really succinctly, yes, I think part of the problem is the Washington office has their fingers a little bit too far into the pie.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
The only other thing that we flag kind of as a major topic in the letter is adaptive management. And in 2015, they use that term extremely loosely. Basically, what it meant. Basically, what it meant is, if sage grouse populations start going down, we're not going to allow anything to happen, and there's no way to come back out of that. It doesn't meet my definition of adaptive management. It didn't meet the Department of Interior's own definition of adaptive management. And so, that whole program completely changed in 2019. The problem is, their designated or their preferred alternative has yet another adaptive management process. And so, we're really advocating for sticking with the state's adaptive management process, because that could really dictate some significant differences between what's in the RMP and what happens if populations start to decline, which we frankly have seen in Churchill County largely due to wildfire, quite frankly. That's the last main point that we make in the letter. As you saw, we also have an attachment called the document-specific comments. You'll see there's gaps in there. There's probably a few typos in there. If you all decide to adopt the letter today, I would use that as the framework to finish this table off, just given the sheer size and magnitude of the EIS. We could use another week, frankly, to fill this out, but what we would do is fill it out in the framework of those major themes of the letter. With that, Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions as best I can. Any questions?
Is the main population of sage grouse in the Stillwaters?
Within Churchill County, the main populations are in the Klan alpines and the Desatoyas, probably more so. The modeled habitat does show some habitat on the top of the Stillwaters, where it actually looks like sage grouse habitat, which is good. But the state has actually designated population management units that exclude the Stillwaters, because if there are any birds there, and I haven't heard of anyone seeing birds in like a really long time, historically a long time, I don't know that they have the seasonal habitat available to them to make them viable populations. And so, the state has actually kind of not written off, but carved the Stillwaters out of anything they want to focus management on. Any other questions or public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the draft comment letter of the Bureau of Land Management's Draft Resource Management Plan Amendment and Environmental Impact Statement for Greater Sage Grouse, and authorize the county manager in coordination with the RCI to complete the document-specific attachment consistent with the letter.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Should have skipped over you still.
That's all right.
70, Consideration of Possible Action, Adoption of Resolution 10-2024, a resolution designating the Churchill County Library Director to be a position for which there is a critical labor shortage and has a critical need position. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Joe Sanford for the record. Staff is requesting that we designate the library director as a critical labor shortage position. This designation would allow a former retired public employee to refill that position without losing benefits. NRS requires that we adopt certain findings through a public meeting in order to make this designation. Those findings are included within the resolution. Essentially, it just requires us to show that without this designation, it would be difficult to provide the necessary public services, in this case, for the library. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments for Joe? Is there any public comment?
Who's going to be the director of the library?
If you could come up here and state your name for us.
Sorry.
No problem.
Who's going to be?
Your name, please.
My name is Judith Wade, but last week, I live in Churchill County. But who's going to be the director? And how is that going to affect the other employees?
Wade, go ahead, then.
If you don't mind, I'll jump in here. So, the county management staff nor the commission does the hiring. The hiring will be done, and that authority falls within the library board itself. But we've only got a couple of folks here locally that are retired out of the management of the library, so that should give you some indicator of what that applicant pool may look like.
Are they going to have to have a bachelor's degree?
They don't have to meet the requirements of, which I think is higher than that. I think it's a master's.
Where are they going to find someone to move to Churchill County with a master's?
That's why we have to have a public process. I think that's why we're looking at a former employee coming in, maybe six months, to get things back up and running, and then do a search to find someone that fits those requirements. Those requirements are not the county's requirements. Those are the requirements the state of Nevada set by statute by the State Assembly Governor Senate.
So, the library will continue to be open, though, right?
Yes, and hat not to Chris and his work with the library board in being able to basically bring back, I think, three employees, correct?
Three employees, that's correct.
Right, so that we were able to open back up on Tuesday. So, it's been open on Tuesday moving forward with not exactly the same hours, but I think a pretty good share of opening. And so, we can get the, hopefully, an individual hired into this critical need position, then they'll be able to start hiring the positions that are not coming back, promoting and pushing those out, at the same time putting together a national search for a new library director.
Is the pay going to be equal to their education, though? Are they offering better?
Yeah, that's all through, that's all through comp studies that have been done in the county yet.
And are there?
Nothing different there than what has been for the last, the salary, I think, is different, because it's been adjusted over the last 10 years. But I mean, that's a whole process, yeah.
But there's not going to be any restrictions of books or what people can read or access to? Okay, all right. I just don't want many Nazis standing there saying, "You can't take that book out," because then it would be.
Yeah, but that's all under the library board.
Yeah. But is our library board?
There's currently open positions for the library board. If you're interested, you'd be.
I don't have a bachelor's degree or anything.
Library board needs the library board. The only powers that the commission has beyond budget for library is appointment of the library board members. The library board members have no other requirements than to be Churchill County residents.
And how often do they meet?
Once a month.
Once a month? All right. But the library will stay open, no matter what? Because when it was closed?
Well, we can't make those determinations for you, because we don't run the library. Again, I can't say this enough times. That is totally under the authority of the library board.
Have they reached out to the old librarians that used to work there?
Those are the three that were hired back.
Do you know which ones they are?
I do not. Again, that's all underneath the purview, like Jim's saying, that's all underneath the purview, library board, hours, hiring, the director. We appoint those people on the library board, but that's all we have to do with the library besides their budget.
Okay, because when it was closed, it was just horrifying.
It's open once again. This week, it'll be open Tuesday through Friday. Starting next week, it'll be Tuesday through Saturday. There'll be some limited hours. I think it's 10 to 6, just because we have not filled out the entire staff that was there before.
As long as it's still open. I keep thinking about all those kids I used to see going for their programs and, you know.
Folks of all ages in the library.
Yeah, librarians are very valuable.
No one's going to argue that with you here.
Okay, but I just, you know, it'd be a useless waste of the library if nobody learned to read or write, so that they can go there. Okay, thank you.
I'd say the school district, too.
Well.
How we hope with her?
Not your man. There we go. Not your man. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 10-2024, resolution designating the Churchill County Library Director position to be a position for which there is a critical labor shortage and a critical need position. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Did anyone want to pull any of the letters received? If not, we'll move to Old Business 9A, Consideration of Possible Action, approval of an agreement for the purchase of a conservation restrictive use easement with Dodge Brothers Incorporated on APN 006-591-06, totaling 328.9 acres with 279.57 acres of water rights.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Barbie, for the record, again, you have the details, 328 acres, 279.57 acres of water that will be tied into that conservation easement moving forward. As a reminder, the Navy covers 75% of the cost, and we would then cover the 25%. And we do have the budget authority in existence to do this one. Just a bit of history on this project. This project was underway prior to my getting employed at Churchill County, so for over six years. And in that time, NRCS was going to be a major partner, along with Navy, along with the county, to do the entire Dodge Ranch property. We could not get NRCS to move. We had four years of meetings, and finally, everyone gave up out of frustration, including Carl Dodge. So, what this is, is basically they're breaking it up into more, smaller bites that we can handle as we move forward. So, hopefully, it's our intention that we'll have a multitude of these 3, 4, 500-acre components coming forward to lay conservation easements over that property. It obviously is directly in alignment with the Naval Air Station and their landing and takeoff patterns, which is why it qualifies through the sending site groups. That's basically the overview.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
I thought that that was a 9010. They changed it back.
Yes, it changed back after we came out of, I think, shortly after COVID.
Any other questions? I do have one, Jim. Have we been in touch with NRCS about getting back on this? Because I know they got a huge influx of funding from the feds. No? Probably not worth it either. Any public comment?
Just keep smiling.
Yeah, there you go. Any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve purchase of conservation easement in 444, transferable developmental rights for the April sending site, assessors parcel number 006-591-06.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving to 9B, Consideration of Possible Action, granting a single one-year extension of time to Fernley Business Park LLC to record a merger and re-subdivision parcel map for property located adjacent to the county line and railroad tracks at 17,127 Inland Port Drive, APN 009-251-77 and APN 009-251-78, consisting of 163.78 acres in the industrial zoning district. Randy?
Thank you, Chair, fellow commissioners, Randy Hines, Churchill County Public Works Director. The owner has requested to extend the record of the parcel map due to the fact they will not have all the required signatures prior to the June 14 deadline.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
So, Chris, how many waivers? Have you given that?
This one here would just be, this is the only one for this. Yeah, no, this is the only one for this.
They're working out on it right now.
Yes, they're working on a project. They got approved through the planning commission last month, so.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to grant a single one-year extension of time to the Fernley Business Park LLC to record parcel map for property located at 17127 Inland Port Drive, APN 009-251-77 and 009-251-78. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving to Old Business 9C, thank you, Randy. Old Business 9C, Consideration of Possible Action, rescinding the reappointment of Tara Price, Gritzmacher, and Ashley McGarrett to the Library Board of Trustees with a term beginning July 1, 2024, to comply with the Churchill County Board nomination policy. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford, for the record, a couple of meetings ago, we had had an appointment of Tara and Ashley back to the Board of Trustees. In reviewing that appointment, along with the recent opening of another position, we determined that the way that was done was not in complete compliance with our Churchill County Board nomination policy. And we want to make sure that for positions like this, that we follow the policy as it's set forth. And so, I'd ask that we rescind that appointment, publish the position in compliance with the policy, and direct any current members or a member of the public to apply in accordance with the policy.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to rescind action taken to reappoint Tara Price, Gritzmacher, and Ashley McGarrett to the Library Board of Trustees for a term beginning July 1, 2024, to comply with the Churchill County Board nomination policy. Advertise the open Library Board trustee terms to the public in compliance with the policy, and require any interested person or incumbent trustee to apply for the positions in accordance with the policy.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Old Business 9D, Consideration of Possible Action, ratification of a memorandum of understanding between BLM and the Churchill County, which outlines the roles and responsibilities of the parties throughout the NEPA process and the Sierra Solar Utilities and Access Road projects. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford, for the record, again. This particular memorandum of understanding is for the Sierra Solar Utilities project. We had already agreed to become a cooperating agency on this project, but this is a MOU certifying that agreement, so I'd ask that you adopt it.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the BLM for the Sierra Solar Utilities and Access Roads Project. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to New Business 10A, Consideration of Possible Action, approval of the personnel changes from fiscal year 2024, 2025, as approved in the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Chris Prost, Churchill County Human Resources, for the record. So, this item is being presented as a summary to help clarify the positions that have been approved as part of the budget approval. As you remember, there was many positions that were brought to the, brought in front during the budget cycle. Due to some budget constraints, those had to be kind of pared back. And so, this is basically a document just kind of outlining what was approved and what's in that budget. I can go through each one individually, if you like, but you have a copy. I can give you some highlights. Obviously, the alternate public defender and the public defender have a pretty big impact here due to the requirements from the Department of intelligent defense. We have a couple of positions within the building department after the building official retired. We have a replacement there, and I do have a change to this that I will address here at the end. Human Resources has a couple of positions. There's two new positions, but I want to, I want to stress that these two new positions does not mean that there's two more personnel coming. One is a reclassification, and one is a new position. The big impact has been with the interns, the camp counselors, and the lifeguards, and that's a direct result as the increase of Nevada minimum wage. So, the interns got an increase to minimum wage, and then the camp counselors and the lifeguards, they got an increase over and above minimum wage, mainly to try to keep up with the market that we're in in terms of keeping those positions filled. And that also impacted the recreation leaders 1 and 2 to kind of maintain that gap between the supervisory role of them and the camp counselors themselves. The one change that I wanted to make is, on the building department, we had, I had written that we were going to approve a new full-time position of senior building inspector. After discussion with, with the county manager's office and the district attorney's office, we are actually going to keep that job designation as a building official to kind of keep in line with the verbiage that's in the NRS. However, we are going to scale that job description down to take some of the supervisory with regards to budgeting and hiring and firing and things like that. We're going to take that out, because the building department is going to be falling under public works, and we have a department head. So, there will be a new job description. The title will stay the same, the new job description, and several of these other job descriptions will be presented to you on the June 20 meeting, as well as the pay tables. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. If you do make a motion, do decide to approve, please just make that change to replace senior building inspector with building official. And that is one, two, that is the third bullet. And that is one, two, that is the third bullet point there.
Any questions or comments for Chris? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion with that modification?
I move to approve the personnel changes for FY twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as indicated in the agenda report, with the change to replace senior building inspector to a building official.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
New Business, ten B, consideration of possible action, approval of, of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between Bureau of Reclamation, U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Churchill County to, for delivery of treated effluent to the Stillwater National Wildlife Refuge. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford again for the record. This is an existing memorandum of agreement that allows us to use the Bureau's facilities to discharge effluent from our Moody plant out to the Stillwater Refuge. That hasn't happened much historically, although we are doing so now. This particular amendment will allow the county to apply for the permits and certificates related to this water discharge instead of having it go through the Fish and Wildlife. They made that request, and it is beneficial to the county to have that ability, and so I ask that you adopt this amendment.
Any questions or comments for Joe? Seeing none, can I get a, or any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, memorandum of agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Did anyone want to pull anything off the consent items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
I move to approve the consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Did anyone have anything they want to consider for future agenda items? If not, we'll move to Commissioner and Management Staff Reports, we'll start with you, boss.
I don't have any.
Go ahead, Jessica. I had a meeting with the Navy, me and Jim went up to Reno for that, a pretty good meeting, there were a lot of information to go around between everyone. Jim?
Just lots of meetings, lots of library stuff, but it looks like we're trending in the right direction with the library stuff.
Sheriff?
I have nothing, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
Pam?
Nothing.
Chris?
Nothing.
Sheriff? Just going through department heads now. Claims and payroll, those went around. At this time, is there any public comment? This is the last chance. Seeing none, we have our quarterly jail inspection pursuant to NRS two one one point zero two zero, and with that, we're adjourned.